I don't know if it's gonna be, you know, cuts in salary, if it's gonna be freezes in salary. I will tell you that there are some cities who have negotiated with their bargaining units a wage freeze in exchange for a promise of no layoffs. I'm not aware of anybody that has negotiated a wage cut. There are some out there who have negotiated a wage freeze. I'm not aware of anybody that has negotiated a wage cut. So what I want to do is be realistic. And we will give you some alternatives, hopefully that go more than a million dollars. So you've got an opportunity to pick and choose as to what you can live with and what you can't. But with that broad direction, we'll get cracking on it tomorrow. And I hope we'll have something back to you in two weeks that you can start to chew on.
If I'm gonna chair this meeting, I want to see what I outlined. I want to see the bottom line, if we do the freeze in salary, the bottom line, if we do the freeze in salary and step, and then those two, plus 10%, and then plus 20%. I want to see the numbers if I'm gonna chair this conversation.
We could give you those numbers.
Thank you. Okay, anything else? Okay, the next item is... Where's my... Is it, is it brief?
Yeah, it's really brief. So, more or less, if I ain't mistaken now, the budget will come back to us. First look at will be two weeks, which will be March 25th for the first categories for March 11th. Am I correct? Are we still tuned for that? Or are we going to re... Throw this out?
We're gonna have to throw that schedule out and start all over. On the 25th, we'll be back to you with some alternatives. Once you decide what you can live with, then we can get back into the budget. We'll probably need some extra meetings in April.
That's right.
Now, I'm gonna defer to legal counsel on this. It's my, it's my belief that even though our fiscal year ends at the end of April, that you've got another two or three months to actually pass a budget. Three months? So, you've got a little bit of wiggle room there. If you, if you can't get it done by the end of April, you've still got May, June, July to figure it out. But we may need some extra meetings in April, once we give you the, the big picture. And again, I apologize, I mean, I hate to hit you guys with this, you know, blindsided, but we were operating on one set of assumptions, and all of a sudden, over the last couple of weeks, it all just sort of got knocked into a cock hat. So we're, we're, you know, we're winging it. We're working without a doubt.
Given some of the things that we were gonna be discussing, this may be more appropriate to do at a Saturday session. So you may want to plug that into your schedule as well.
Are you suggesting that the next finance meeting regarding the budget would be on a Saturday?
Not yet.
Yeah.
No, I'd suggest that on the 25th, we come back to you with some overall broad parameters that you've outlined to us tonight. Give us a couple of weeks to sort of give you, you know, a potpourri of alternatives, and then you can go from there.
Okay. Does that satisfy? Okay. Next items, items to be considered at future meetings. Item A, business license ordinance amendment. And any other items? I make a motion to adjourn. Is there a second? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay. Call the Public Works Committee order. Make the minute taken, same people are present. I need a motion to approve minutes, March 25th, 2010.
I'll make a motion. I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Reporting recommendation for four, five, for the drainage issues. Here's the problem I have now. Since we just had a discussion on funding sources for these projects, I like to recommend that we put this on hold until we find out the funding procedures, if we're gonna even have money to do any of these projects. Unless staff wants to give a brief presentation, because after what we just heard tonight, I don't know if I'm ready to pull the trigger on, to do these drainage problems right now.
I don't know that I really have anything to add. I know we've talked about this a couple of times before. I did put together in my memo, a comparison of some of the cost options. And again, it's a, it's a large amount of money, you know, to spend on fixing backyard drainage, especially given the current budget situation. So again, it seems like it may be appropriate to put this on hold and pick it up again at a later time, if that's the council's wish.
Okay, Mr. Cadalas has something to say.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, if anybody up here twisted my arm behind my back and made me take a vote tonight, I'd have to vote no on any new project. So with that in mind, I'm agreeing with, with Mr. Chairman and our city engineer that I think we need to wait and see what our budget's gonna look like, where money's gonna come from, where it's gonna go, before we can make a, make an educated decision on how to move forward with these projects, rather than, you know, rather than trying to discuss it intelligently tonight, as much as I don't like pushing things off, though.
Alman Kedala.
I agree with Alman Kedala, except for one thing. There is a problem that I understand that there is a sewer backup, and that's a health and safety issue, and as a matter of fact, it's illegal. And it only accounts, I understand from the, from what we heard, from the consultant, that it's only about 10% of the flooding in the backyard there. But they are getting toilet paper and other tissue backing up into the sewers. And from what I understand from our city engineer, it's a matter of going back into the sewers and finding out where the influx of storm water is coming from, and to work on that, with the smoke and so forth, finding out what's happening with it. If we do anything at all, that's the one we should be doing or considering at this point.
Well, I believe staff would do that before they even bring it forward to do anything, that they would do the research on that.
Alman Winger.
Relative with what Alderman Shawkey brought up, Mr. Graff or Kramer, did we put a temporary fix on that, or does it still need to be done?
Well, the check valve was put on their service line to prevent the sewage from going into their house through the floor drain. But the problem where the sewage surcharging from the main and coming out of the manholes, I don't believe anything's been done with that yet, right?
And what's involved with that one?
Well, I think possibly a temporary fix could be done of putting some sort of extension on the manhole, but I think we've talked about including this as one of the study areas like we did for Forest View, you know, not this fiscal year, but next fiscal year. It wouldn't be a new line item on the budget, that it's a continuing program, and then we would just do this part of it. Each year, they choose which sections to do. Correct me if I'm wrong. So, yeah, if, if it's everyone's wish to do that, we could just do this section, again, not adding anything new to the budget, but just doing this section as part of that program.
And, and is that, that's in a backyard, correct?
It's a backyard, sanitary sewer.
Okay, so, so what would you do? You'd extend it and then put bushes around it or something, so, so no one trips over it, or how does it work?
Yeah, I mean, I probably have to look into it a little bit more. I mean, the concern is if you, if you cap it at this place, you know, there's pressure in the line. If you cap it in this place, does it come out some other place? It does us no good to fix the problem here and just send the problem to someone else. So that's why, probably need a little bit more engineering research on it before we would even do that. It may be, it may be beneficial to just study the whole line and come up with the permanent repair, rather than trying to build up a manhole. That's something we can look at and we can bring back to you.
Well, like, something like this, I don't believe we should wait on. This is something that needs to get done. You know, let's start looking at it, or whatever's involved. So would it be an outside engineer that looks at this, or?
Yeah, we, well, I know we currently have one contract doing a sanitary sewer evaluation study, so either using that same engineer or using a different engineer. Again, I don't think it would be until after May 1st, till the new budget took effect. Is that correct?
Yes, that INI study was included in the capital improvements program starting next year. I think this area, if we were just looking at this one line solely, or this one watershed that fills that one line, this would be a little smaller than what the overall INI study area was looking at. So we'd have to break that out, just to find out if we wanted to look at that. Again, I don't know if we can, we may have to look at a larger area, since it is taking water from that whole surrounding neighborhood and funneling it through there. So we may actually have to look at a larger area, but we can investigate that and bring it back to the committee.
Yeah, because this would be first priority, the sanitary, in my opinion. And this isn't something that we, we should put on a shelf. I mean, it's an identified problem, and let's, you know, fix it. Thank you.
Alman Coles.
This is a health problem.
Right.
This is a problem that has to be fixed. I mean, you don't, I mean, it's really a health problem. If we don't, how, nobody in this room would like to have sewage in their houses, especially through a, through a toilet, or through a drain, or anything like that. So this is actually a health problem. So it should be looked into, and it shouldn't hold back, shouldn't be held back.
Alman Kedala.
In light of what's being set up here, which is accurate, I'll retract a part of my statement that the, you know, pursue the sanitary investigation. I don't, I don't know enough about engineering to know if what I'm gonna say next is even remotely accurate, but you have GIS on, on your sanitary lines, so you got a pretty good idea where the next lowest manhole cover is. So, I mean, could you do a real quick in-house investigation of where the next one's likely to, to surcharge, if you were to raise the collar on this one? And see if it's at least off of private property and further away from a home than this one is?
Absolutely. We can try and do some temporary in-house fixes, or some modeling of our own, to see if we can remedy short-term the project. Let me just add one, one item. I think Dave touched on it a little bit as well. These two problems work concurrently together. The stormwater issue affects the sanitary line being surcharged. That watershed water backs up into that sanitary line, causing that sanitary. So without correcting a portion of the stormwater issue, you're not gonna fully complete the sanitary issue. So these work hand in hand. And we think a large part of the sanitary issue is due to that stormwater sitting in that rear yard watershed.
Okay, so the consensus now in the council here is to try to do a temporary fix on the 353 and 359 North Cedar Avenue. Is that the council's? Well, then, overall, so you wanna go out and spend, what was the total price tag to fix that whole project?
Not the whole project.
What you just said.
No.
No, just the sanitary part.
To fix the temporary sanitation part?
Right.
Right, but, I mean, I believe it's all one project. Am I right? Dave? To fix both, to fix that sanitation part, we would have to pick one of these options. Am I right?
No.
Well, to tighten up the sanitary line, we don't have to, but that's a, it's a different study of doing the, the smoke testing, and house inspections, and all those things to determine what kind of repairs would be needed in the sanitary sewer. Nobody has an estimate on that, 'cause nobody knows, you know, what the condition of that sewer is. We've only looked at so far, the stormwater part of it. It's all the, you know, the dollars included in the, in the report are strictly for the, for the stormwater portion.
Okay, so that's just the stormwater. We did not look into price to fix the sanitation issue in these two residents?
No, because it would, it would require doing an INI study. So, I mean, it would be that engineering money would have to be spent upfront to determine that.
And we can't do that in-house, or we could do that in-house?
We can't do the INI study in-house. We can do things like taking elevations on manhole rims, and
Okay.
We could probably put a bolt-down cover on that sewer in-house. We can do those kind of, but really, but determining the condition of the line and where it's leaky, that's something we would, we would hire out.
Alman Kedala.
So that I understand what I think we're getting at here, I think tonight, the consensus of the council is to say that the, the stormwater problem fixes, as have been presented to us, we would like to push that discussion off until after we have a better feeling for the budget. However, in the meantime, without spending consulting dollars, just staff time, we want you to look into a, a stopgap fix, at least to alleviate the sanitary problem, and come back to us with, with a recommendation and possible negative repercussions of what happens downstream and where. But we're not saying tonight that we're only gonna fix sanitary. We're just saying tonight that we're not gonna look at storm until we know where the dollars are on the overall budget. Does that sound about right?
That sounds exactly the motion.
Just a question, why wouldn't we start the INI study now? On that specific area?
I would think staff could answer it better than I, but we don't, we don't have a contract. That's gotta be an outside consultant, and I think we're all skittish about spending new monies without knowing what the results are right now. I think, I think we know we can, we can stop the sewer from overflowing if, if we just temporarily, it won't be attractive, but it, for a period of time, it stops the sanitary water from going into the, into the owner's yard. We just need to know who, if anybody, that's gonna adversely affect, and I think I'm looking for a cheap, fast fix. The INI is smoke testing, finding where the waters, the stormwater is infiltrating the sanitary system, and it's, it's more involved, it's costly, and it also is gonna take time to implement. And as Mr. Graff said, that wouldn't have been until, you know, next year's budget anyway, so we wouldn't have started that until May. I think we were approaching the spring season, and there might be something that can be done before we could even implement that. Plus, we might not have to expend that cost to do a cheap, ugly, temporary, but effective fix.
Alman Winger.
So is what you're saying, that we can look at this in-house, do temporary fix, but look at, you know, the temporary fix in this backyard, and you'll know that it will or will not adversely affect another area, and you would do the temporary fix there, too? I mean, is that what we're talking about?
Hang on one minute, okay? Hang on one minute. Hang on. Go ahead, Tom. Hang on a minute, ma'am.
Thank you, Alderman Wesley. We will try and accomplish looking at several temporary fixes and see if we can recreate during excessive storm infiltration of that sanitary line, so we're not putting anyone else at risk. Right now, we're only experiencing rear yard excursions, and that's far more tolerable than inside the home. Once we start trying to manipulate that sanitary line and changing its path of least resistance, hydraulically speaking, we, the last thing we would want to do is cause anyone any undue damage in their home. So again, let us look at doing some temporary and perhaps unesthetic fixes to see how that goes as we enter into these next few rainy months.
Okay. Go ahead, you'd like to speak now?
I got Ted Mike.
I think what you're talking about, about the Valeria property, they fixed something. It's not, will be working for my property, because like today, it's raining already, and we still have lots of water in our backyard. It's come through my house, close to the window, from my south side, side, not from the Valeria one. So I just wanna know if you maybe can do something, maybe the cheaper one-priced project, if you don't have any too much money right now for the more expensive one, to fix and help us, because you know, it's raining right now, tomorrow and Sunday, and all that time when it's raining, we, we are so nervous. And my husband need to go back from work, and we are put it outside like three sun pumps, borrow from our friends, and somebody need to stay home and watch.
John, did we go over there, did we get a phone call saying that it is up to their windows already, in that area? Did you call her, him today, saying that's that fire up already? The water?
No. I did not receive any calls today, but, but we can monitor it.
We will monitor it. I mean, we will monitor the, the situation over there temporarily. But I don't think this council's ready to spend 58 or whatever, until we look at all options on that.
But you got already the options, the three, three projects. Maybe we can choose the more, not more expensive, and it's working also. It will be fixed, my property and Valeria property. It's the water not will be, you know, came through our house.
I totally understand it. Right now, we have to address the sanitation issue first, which we just gave them the directions to go back and look at that and fix that. But on stormwater perspective, I don't think this council's ready, after what we just heard, to go out. If we could fix this, this way first, then maybe once the budget comes back, then we rebudget it. Right now, there's no money in the budget to do any of these projects. And you just heard from the state right now, that they owe us money. I mean, I ain't saying that I'm gonna ignore this, I ain't saying that I'm gonna put this on the back burner, but right now, we have a sanitation issue out there, where our sewer backing up first. We need to correct that first, priority. This council looked at it for health reasons, and that's the direction we're gonna take right now. We agree that we will monitor the situation in that backyard with the rain is coming. We have guys on call 24/7. All you have to do is call the police department, and we'll be right out.
And what, you can help us?
Have we not been, have we not been out there before? Have we not put a pump in there to keep that pump going constantly, to keep it out of your area? Have we not done that already? Has, has John Kramer not been out there to take care of it? I'm just asking, have we done that?
Yeah, you, you was on my property, maybe once, but Mr. John Kramer, yes, lots of times, and even from the city, we got a, some generator, but it's not working, so we need to go far away and borrow from my friends from Chicago and bring three of them, but it's still not enough. It's still not enough. We got like a tilt-high, swivel, to our knee. So this is not, not, you know, this is not a house where we can live, you know, slowly, and we're not nervous. This is a whole very bad situation, you know? We, we all the time worry, and we come back early from work if it's raining, or something like this situation. We can live like this.
Yeah.
We wake up, doesn't matter what, what time it's, 12, midnight, or 1:00, 1:00 AM, 2:00 AM, and we need to, and check the yards, and push more, maybe some pumps, sometimes not working.
Alman Luton.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Wesley, for allowing me to speak. Just philosophically, let me say that we still have a reserve, and that reserve can be used for, as Alderman Joe Coles said, for the times when we're short on money. And I also said that the IOUs from the government are still assets, are still assets to the city. They will eventually be paid. When? I don't know. You don't know. I am in favor of taking the small amount of money that's necessary from our reserves, take care of this problem, because it's a sanitary problem. It's people in our ward, it's been here on the agenda for several sessions, and I think that it is a problem that's not gonna go away unless it's fully resolved. We spent $50,000 approximately for the study. We've been involved, John's done yeoman work to get out there a couple of times to handle the problem. I think from a staff point of view, it would be just better that they don't have the problem anymore, that it's resolved, settled, fini, done. And I'd be willing to vote to spend the money from the reserves to take care of it. Thank you.
Alman, please.
Well, if we're gonna spend the money for the reserves and his ward, like he said, then the next one on the board is in my ward at 160,000, or maybe 200,000. I think there's one in Alderman, Roy Wesley, and John Cadalas, that was two and a half million, so let's write the check for $4 million right now, and we're good to go, if that's what we're gonna do. We just heard that we're, we're gonna lose a million dollars, and all of a sudden, we're gonna, I can't do it.
Alman Winger.
And there's been identified areas in Ward 3 as well, where backyards flood. And then, we need to do all of them at once, and we pull it all from the reserves and, and get done all the backyards, but this of doing one and not all the others, I, I don't see the justification in it. I say life safety issues, health safeties, we need to do those, but all the other backyard issues, we, we, we need to either do all of them, or, you know, I think you understand what I'm saying. Thank you.
Valerie, here, Jess.
Hi, I'm Valerie Schiller, and I live at 359 North Cedar. And I can appreciate everything that you guys have done. I appreciate the time you're taking, but I do feel that it does keep getting pushed off, and I, and I do understand people may lose their jobs, there may be salary freezes. Just so you know, the rain that just happened a few minutes ago, when I hear that, that, that is my life every time it rains, and I literally wanna run out of here and go make sure my yard, that is completely saturated from having over 20 inches of snow so far this season, is not filling up in the swell, because if it continues to rain the way it did just a few minutes ago, I can guarantee you, by midnight, I will be calling 766-2060 and asking them to send someone from John Kramer's staff to my yard to help me with a pump to put out on the side of my house, and I will be walking window to window to see if the two front sewers in my yard are full, if the two sewers in the back of the Patel, Patel's yard are full, and if the four-inch sewer, which is at the corner of my house, is filling up from a swell from getting everybody's water. And then about 1 o'clock in the morning, the sanitary sewer, there's a, a clean-out valve in my yard, that's gonna be looking like Buckingham Fountain with toilet tissue and everything that people have put into their toilets and into their septic tanks coming into my yard. And I, I'm literally, I shake when I hear the rain we just had a few minutes ago, because if that continues for two to three hours at a time with saturated ground, it will be a disaster in my yard. And I've lived like this for 10 years, and again, I appreciate not wanting to tap into reserves, and I so don't want to see one person on that public work staff losing their job, because they have been so compassionate, so wonderful, but I cannot live like that anymore. I cannot. It's awful. I encourage anybody, after four hours of rain, to come to our yard and see what I am enduring in my house. I have two pumps, we have one on the side of the house, they have pumps going. That is not a humane way for people to live. And I can honestly say, I, hearing that rain just a few minutes ago made me wanna run out of here and just start watching the sewers, because I know what it's gonna be like. And I appreciate you guys did the, the survey. It was a lot of money. I, I agree. I, I agree, it was a lot of money, but it has to, it has to be rectified somehow. I, I'm, I'm begging you. It, it is not a way for a person to live. And you can hear the rain again. I, I can assure you, if this keeps up for two or three hours, John, you've been out there, Dave, you've been out there. It's horrible. It's horrible. My, the side of my home is getting cracks in the foundation. It, it's, it's not fair that only a certain part of a yard can take that much water. It's just, it's not fair. And, and I thank you, Mr. Luton, for saying what you said, because I'm in full agreement with you. We, we keep putting it off. I mean, last month, it was, we were waiting for John Forrest to see if engineers 10 years ago made the mistake of allowing us to build a home on there, and that wasn't even touched on tonight. So I just, I, I hope and pray it's not gonna be put off too long. And, and again, I'm not a compassionate person, I'm very sympathetic. I don't want to see people losing their jobs or getting pay cuts, but in the same token, I need some peace of mind back there. And I know, I know I'm going on, but the rain is upsetting me, 'cause I know how saturated the ground is, and I know what we're in for. I can, I can tell you times, how long, how much rain, anything. So thank you for hearing me out, and thank you for understanding.
Alman Kedala.
You know, if, I don't know how many of the Alderman up... You know, if, I don't know how many of the Aldermen up here...